Good evening. Special meeting of the Oakley Planning Commission is called to order at 6:30 PM. We'll call it this time. Commissioner Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Oliveros?
Here.
Commissioner Ireland? Commissioner Gaudy?
Here.
And I'm Vice Chair Price, present. This time we'll stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please. At this time, we will be doing a selection of officers. Mr. Shirella, would you please report for us on this?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission. For this item, the Planning Commission will be selecting a Chair and Vice Chair, and this will be for two-year terms. Just a little bit of history on this. There was a Chair and Vice Chair selected back in February of this year. That was Chair Diego Verduzco and Vice Chair Leonard Price. Since that time, all of the terms have expired for the Planning Commission. In February, later in February of this year, Commissioners Carrie Harvey and Yard Oliveros were elected to two-year terms that are set to expire in February of '27. And then here in September, we had our two newest Planning Commissioners, Commissioner Gaudy and Commissioner Ireland, and Commissioner Price was reappointed. And the three of them were appointed for four-year terms set to expire in October of 2029. That's just a little bit of history of where we are and where the current terms are. So what is being requested is any member of the Commission can make a nomination for a Chair and/or Vice Chair, and then the Commission can discuss that or take a vote. And at the end of this, what we'll do is, once we've established a selected or an appointed Chair and Vice Chair, staff will rearrange the seats for the new seating order. And we will need a moment to update the "Press to Talk" button that the Chair will see when each Commissioner is requesting to speak. We'll have to do that on the computer. So we may just take a few moments to do that before moving on with the agenda. But other than that, it's up to the Commission to go ahead and discuss or nominate.
Thank you. Is there any public comments at this time? Saying done, would someone like to nominate and make a motion to nominate the Chair?
I would like to nominate Leonard Price for Chair.
I second that motion. And I would like to nominate Carrie Garvey for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Take a vote, please. By name, again?
I was gonna, I was gonna recommend that maybe the Chair and Vice Chair should be done separate votes. You can take the first motion first.
We'll vote on the Chair first?
Yes.
Well, I second the Chair, Leonard Price.
Do this. Just a voice vote is all we need?
You have a, you have a motion and a second for Commissioner Price to be appointed as Chair, so now you can take a verbal vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll now move to the Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Carrie Garvey for Vice Chair.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Kinda new at this, but I'll get it.
All right, thank you. So we, staff will ask if we could have a short recess for us to rearrange the seats and fix the request-to-speak buttons. We would appreciate that. It'll only be about three or four minutes.
We're doing a shovel? So you guys are moving on the other side?
So I have to apologize. Nothing has changed. We will switch out the, we'll switch out the Chair and Vice Chair's name tags for the next meeting. We'll have their appropriate titles on there. But for tonight, please forgive us. We could do it, but just, we'll keep it as is and we'll go ahead and keep going. Thank you.
It's time we call for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. I have one speaker that requests to speak. Beth Monsey? Not here. That's the only one we have. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. Is there any discussion or would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll now move on to public hearings. Public hearing is on Brownstone. Evan Gobrin will make a presentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And Commissioners, give me one moment to get that presentation loaded up. Thank you. All right. Tonight, our public hearing is on the, a design review application for Brownstone subdivision 8803. First, as always, we want to lay out the land, and so we're there on the southern portion of the city along Brownstone, where that star is on your screen. Here's a closer look. There you have Main Street and Brownstone, where they meet, the intersection there in the bottom right corner. The parcel is, the subject parcel tonight is outlined in orange. It is zoned R6 for single-family residential. Its general plan designation is residential, residential low slash medium. It's got a variety of land uses around it. It's got an HVAC company to the east, religious assembly to the southwest there. In that cutout of the parcel, you have some homes to the north and rural homes and land to the south. The subject property has a vineyard in front along Brownstone Road, and then a vacant portion of the land with various trees towards the rear. For some background on this project, this project, this subdivision, was, the tentative parcel map was approved on February 12th, 2007. The council reviewed the proposal for a subdivision, reviewed the environmental analysis, and approved the map and the mitigated negative, negative declaration at that time. Then, in 2017 and 2020, the applicants filed for a tentative map extension to extend that time while they, while they lined up the project. And then in July 13th, on July 13th of 2021, there was an application for a modification of the conditions of approval. So this subdivision had been approved. It was predicated on some stormwater infrastructure going in. The conditions of approval addressed that in the original approval. By this time in 2021, it was clear that that stormwater infrastructure would not be there. At the same time, stormwater, the thoughts around stormwater infrastructure changed a little bit from 2007. Things moved towards onsite detention of water, trying to recharge groundwater, and so there were some additional options for the applicant. They asked for a modification of the conditions of approval that said, okay, if we don't have this infrastructure in place, what if we replace temporarily six of the lots with a detention basin, meeting the county requirements for stormwater? You know, a lot of subdivisions today use basins and, and treatment onsite. And then, there's a condition that if that infrastructure is built one day, that detention basin can be, you know, demolished, sort of, you know, modified, graded, and then homes would be built there, just like the original proposal. And the council reviewed this and they approved it. They said, yes, if you make onsite detention and you take away those six homes for that, that would be fine. You have adequate infrastructure if it rains or if there's a 100-year storm, something like that. And then again, there's a condition is if that infrastructure is built, then you can build the final six lots, making 50 in total. There's the background there. Finally, December 10th, 2024, the final map was approved. So that's where you take this, the, the final subdivision to the county. Everyone's reviewed it and they're able to move forward with selling those lots separately, and they're very close to being done. You know, the subdivision's final. The last part of that, you know, pretty much the last entitlement step is design review. And so that's what tonight is about. So tonight's application is on the design of the homes. That had not been addressed yet, and including the landscaping, details on sound walls, things of that nature. Here we have the plotting plan. This is where you plot out the different homes, the floor plans, where they're going, what architectural style they have. And you lay it all out there for us to review for conformance with our guidelines. And so here we have that plotting plan on the left. We have five floor plans, and we have a matrix here that shows that there's five of them. They each come in three different elevation styles, and then there's 50 units in total. Here's a look at the home plans. So again, these come in different styles, and so you're just seeing one style of each home plan. But I just want to give you a moment to take a look at them. We have one, we have one single, single-story, and then the rest of four others are two-story plans. These homes come in four possible styles. So the neighborhood has four styles to choose from: Craftsman, California Ranch, Spanish Eclectic, and Prairie. This one, you know, I, I hope I don't make it confusing, but each plan comes in three of these styles. So Plan Four may not have California Ranch. They may have the other three. Each of these styles has three different color and material schemes. So you don't just get that one. You also change the material, the roof, and the colors. And so that's how we get some variety in these neighborhoods, so that you try and make each home look different. Here's a rendering of the neighborhood from the applicant, and I'll let you take a look at that for a moment. Here's a table with the floor plans. So we have five of them. The reason the square footage ranges is because they have options. Instead of a three-car garage, you can add another bedroom, convert part of it into another bedroom. We have, again, one one-story plan, and the others are two-story plans. And then they range in terms of bedrooms, bathrooms, and garage spaces. The smallest is 2,100 square feet, and the largest is a little under 3,600 square feet. All right, there is some nuance here. I don't want to break anyone's brains, but we're gonna start with Plan Two and Plan Three. The floor plans look very similar. When you look at them, they are very similar. And the floor plan that you see on the left-hand side is the upper floor of Plan Two and Plan Three. You'll see that there's a bonus room on Plan Three. And for us as planners, we do look at, when the floor plan's similar, you know, we want to take a closer look at that. You know, is this the same home? And, and are we to go to the Planning Commission and say it's five floor plans? Here, so we did take a closer look. We see that there's a bonus room on the, on Plan Three. The facade is actually different, so when you look at the facade, which is in the middle, you see some more articulation on the second floor of Plan Two. And so they've tried to change the materials as well to get some variety there. And then when you look at the side, which is on the right-hand side, you'll see that the massing changes, again, to accommodate that, that bonus room. So you see there is some variety there. Now I'm gonna show you the next one. Plan Four and Five are similar. On the floor plan, there on the left-hand side, you have the second floor. And it does not, it is not labeled a bonus room, but you can see there's some additional floor space by the front of the home. On the front facade, you see, again, they've tried to make it, bring some variety and different articulation and window treatments there, and the materials are distributed differently. So there we have that. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see the side elevation changes as well, the massing of the building. And that's because the floor plan of the second floor is a little bit different. Now, on every application, well, pretty much everyone, we'll provide you an analysis. You know, our job as staff is to review what comes in, see if it meets our guidelines, and then we make a recommendation to you. And so to cover that for this application, we reviewed the proposed plans for consistency with the adopted City of Oakley residential guidelines. So we're not going off vibes or our feelings. We have to go off what the council's approved. And so they've approved this document. We go through it and we confirm whether the plans meet that or not, and then we're here to tell you whether they do or don't. Since the vesting tentative map is already approved and the final map is recorded, staff have focused this analysis on the home design, home plotting, and landscaping. Any other part of this project is, is approved. We find that the homes are arranged in accordance with the city's residential design guidelines. They varied the front setbacks. That way, when you drive into the neighborhood, you just don't see a wall of houses all in the same spot. They include, at least 20% of the homes are single-story, which the guidelines call for. And where two-story homes are located adjacent to one another, second stories are separated by a minimum of 15 feet for increased privacy and greater visual spacing between buildings. So we were looking for those items when we took a look at their plan, and we found those, and that was good. The proposed elevations demonstrate consistency as well. Each proposed elevation maintains a coherent architectural style with compatible fixtures and detailing. You know, one thing we look for, we want exterior materials to wrap around. We just don't want them to look like they're stuck on the front. And so we see that. We want some articulation as well. We don't just want one box. We want parts of it to come out. And so the second story, like we looked at on some of them, is coming out a little bit. Parts of the first story are, are stepping back. We want entry porches. That's what our design guidelines call from, and we're seeing prominent entry porches as well, which is good. And so ultimately, we found that these met our design guidelines. I did not make a slide on landscaping, but landscaping looked good as well. It had natural drought-tolerant plants and met California's water regulations, so that was good. Ultimately, we found it consistent with the findings for approval. We are proposing some conditions of approval that I want to highlight for you Commissioners. First is ensuring conformance with older conditions of approval. So we want to make sure we carry over some of the conditions, or we at least reference them, like the detention basin. We don't want someone to forget that, you know. You know, planners do. Heaven forbid I work somewhere else or I get hit by a bus. You know, we want the, we want future planners to not have to dig through and find that old resolution. So we highlight that in this proposed resolution for you. We also, so the fencing on this, on this project, there was a lot of discussion in 2007 on the fencing. People were concerned about horses kicking in wood boards. You know, some spots, they wanted sound walls. It was very complicated. And our original records of the vesting tentative map that we're supposed to match are a little low resolution. So I spent a lot of time making sure that their current proposal is consistent with that. But I am asking for some additional time. So there is a condition that just says, you know, we think that we have the fencing correct. Some of it has to be vinyl, so that horses can't, they have a harder time kicking it down. But we want some more time to confirm that the fencing meets that original subdivision plan. And so we'll take a look at that when they submit for a building permit, just to make sure. And then I also wanted some additional review on the neighborhood entrance. So I just didn't see a ton of details on the neighborhood entrance when you first drive in. And our guidelines mention that we want something there, and so we're just asking that, as planning, we want to make sure they have something when they come in for a building permit. So we added that as well. All right, we're almost done. Thanks for your patience. For environmental review, the proposal for home designs and site design elements of the subdivision fall within the scope of the original subdivision's SEQA analyses. Subdivision 8803 was analyzed through an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration, which was adopted by the Oakley City Council on February 12th, 2007, through the adoption of Resolution 18-07. Because of that, because that environmental review took place, no additional environmental analysis is required. That project expected homes to be here, and so that's what we're looking at tonight. All right. Staff's recommendation, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving Brownstone subdivision 8803, design review 20, 25-16 as conditioned. And I am able to answer any questions you have. If, if for some reason I can't, I also have the applicant here, the architect, and a representative for the property owner. And they're happy to answer any questions, and they don't have a presentation or anything like that. It's just, it's your pleasure. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Any questions from the Planning Commission?
I have a few questions, if that's okay. Can you go back to the, to the map where you showed kind of the layout of, of what those 50 homes will look like? You mentioned the final six lots, and could you point out where those would be, those final six? Is that?
Yeah, I should have highlighted that. That is on this slide. The bottom-left map, there in the top-right corner, you'll see some dotted, a dotted box that represents six lots that are to be the detention basin.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. And then one thing on the staff report that I was reading on the project description, if you can just help me clarify. It says here, "The Quimby Act prohibits a local government from acquiring developments with 50 units or less from dedicating physical parkland. The city will instead impose park and lieu fees." Can you just kind of clarify what that means in terms of the park, I guess, more from like a family perspective? Parks are really big here in the city, so if you could just help clarify that.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. That's a great question. When, when there's something like a law that doesn't, here there is. There's a law that doesn't allow us to require them to dedicate parkland. If you get a neighborhood of a certain size, the city typically requires you to dedicate some of the land to a neighborhood park. Here, they're right at the threshold, 50, and so we're not able to require that. And so typically, what happens is we, we require in lieu fees. When you don't build a park, you pay into fees for a park that, those funds go to park development. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions on that.
And I can follow with you offline, just to clarify on that part. And then the other question on the, on the designs, so we looked at the styles for the two stories. So for the, for the single-story homes, are those going to be the same styles?
Yeah, maybe I can, maybe I can clarify there. Let's see. Thank you. Oh, that's perfect. Let's see. I'm sorry, because they only come in three of the four, I just want to make sure I know which three. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Okay, so of the five floor plans, there's one single, single-story floor plan. It comes in Spanish, Prairie, and Spanish. And then each of those comes in three different color schemes.
Okay. You never know. I may want to move into one of them.
And then I apologize. I just had a good correction. It's Spanish Prairie and Craftsman. Thanks for your patience there, Commissioner.
No problem. And then one last question. Will solar panels be included in designs?
Yes. All new homes in California need solar panels, and so they will require them at the building permit stage.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I, I have a couple for you. Looking at the way it, the project is laid out, what are you gonna see when you drive down Brownstone as far as looking at this division? As far as what type of walls or fencing is gonna go facing Brownstone Road?
Yes. Right now, my recollection of it is that there is sound walls for a portion of that view. And I'm just gonna confirm that, just so I don't get it incorrect. Let me take a look. Okay, so it is as I recall. So let me get you an overhead view of it. That is a great question. All right, so the property line right along Brownstone, that is all gonna be sound wall and then entrance. And then behind the, the church, the religious assembly use, right now, that's slated for vinyl fencing. Our records show that they had re- Our records show that they had reason to make it that way and that they chose to. And so, and that was included in the original approval. For me, I am asking the commission for more time. I want to make sure I go through all the records again and make sure that that's what's supposed to be there.
And one other question on the said basin that's going to go in there. Is that going to be landscaped or who's going to maintain that where there's no houses?
That's a really good question, and I do recommend, just so we make sure we get it correct tonight. If it pleases the commission, I recommend we hand that to the, to the developer to answer tonight. Yeah, if they're able to. Yeah, I don't recall it exactly at this moment. Thank you.
Any, any other comments?
I'm looking at the planning, the staff report. And when it shows the subdivision front elevations, I see five on mine and there's only four. So, they removed one of the elevations.
You see five on, let me take a look. Okay, so, they have, yeah, maybe there's, here, I think I can clarify that. All right, so, your floor plan, you're, you're going to get five. And are these the five you're seeing? Okay, perfect. So, the floor plan, you have five options. For the style, you know, the way it's designed, the colors, that's going to be four. Does that make sense? I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions there. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? We now open the public hearing. We see if any comments from the applicant, if you want to speak.
This is just a general question. Is it pretty standard to do those either fences and the sound wall in most of the subdivisions? Do you know if that's standard these days? I kind of got the feeling it was. I was just, I don't know if that can be asked now. Does anybody know?
If it pleases the commission, I can answer that. Um, the, from my experience, and feel free to jump in, I see, I see a mix of it. But I do know that Oakley's design guidelines do try and get sound wall all the way around. In 2007, with this project, they did hash that out then, and so, I'm trying to match that. And it is a mix of sound walls and fencing.
Yeah, I'll just add typically, sound walls are seen where needed to block sound from adjacent arterial roads or roads with high amounts of traffic. It's possible the SEQA analysis found that Brownstone at full capacity build-out, general plan build-out of the city would create enough noise to, to require a sound wall to protect the private spaces of the subdivision. Evan is correct that there's a lot of history on this project when it comes to the fence materials. There were comments from neighbors that owned horses to the north. And I think some, some of the fences up, up on the northern property may have been requested to be vinyl as well. So, as Evan stated, there are conditions in this design review and with the subdivision that are still active, whether they're mentioned in this resolution or not, that this project is subject to comply with. And if we have poor resolution maps or whatever, we'll dig in further. We'll, we'll review minutes, whatever we need to do to make sure we get those correct. So, that those neighbors, they came out years and years ago and had their, their wishes conditioned in the project. We'll still get those built on the project.
And I just want to add, we have reviewed minutes and everything like that. We feel that this matches the original approval, but I, you know, if you don't mind, just want to double-check.
Thank you. We have not received any cards or comments from the public about this. So, at this time, we'll close the public hearing and it's time, call for deliberations from the commission. Would any commissioner like to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. A call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving, moving on to the regular calendar. There are no regular calendar items. We'll move on to reports. And any reports from staff?
Yeah, I do have a couple of reports. Thank you, Chairman Price. The first report is that I want to let the planning commission know, and I believe I may have emailed you this, but I wanted to make this announcement as well, that the planning commissioners are invited to attend the Oakley on Ice Ribbon Cutting, which is this Saturday, November 22, at 4:45 at the ice rink. And the Oakley on Ice is an ice skating rink open to the public, and it will be located behind the Mercantile Building, which is right here across the street on the corner of Main and Norcross. And it'll operate daily from November 21 through January 4 of next year. The ribbon cutting will include a performance by San Francisco Ice Theater. San Francisco Ice Theater is a member of the U.S. Figure Skating Theater on Ice and the Skating Club of San Francisco. And for more information on the Oakley on Ice and ticket pricing, people can visit oakleyonice.com. The second announcement is that the City of Oakley Holiday Tree Lighting will be held on Thursday, December 4, starting at 5:00 p.m. It'll run for about two hours. It'll be right here at the Civic Center Park. The Holiday Tree Lighting is a family-friendly event that's free, that has free admission and parking, obviously. And visitors, visitors can enjoy cookies and cocoa, arts and crafts for the children, and live entertainment by local organizations. Santa will also be making a special visit and taking pictures with children. And finally, I just wanted to give the planning commissioners a heads-up. I'll probably follow up by email tomorrow. But we found a, a planning commissioner's training just this afternoon, and our senior planner, Jose Cortez, was working after hours to try to contact the event organizers. I believe it's in Martinez. We wanted to know the cost. We just found out there is no cost for it. So, for those of you that may be interested in attending that, we will send out more information to your emails. So, please, please check your emails tomorrow sometime in the, in the afternoon. You should have them by then. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call for reports from the planning commission members. Does any member have a report to make?
I attended the ribbon cuttings for our new Chipotle and Starbucks locations in Oakley. They're beautiful, they're beautiful properties. And I was really impressed with their staffing and with the enthusiasm of the owners and the regional managers who showed up. So, they're wonderful businesses, and we're glad to see them in Oakley.
Thank you. At this time, any request for future agenda items from the planning commissioners?
Would we be able to talk at, maybe at some point on the development that is taking place for Cypress and Sellers? I believe there's a Shell gas station right now being built. Just more around like the, the economic development piece of what's going to be coming in anytime soon?
I don't know if we need to make that an agenda item, but I'm happy to have our planning staff put together a packet for the new, the new commissioners that may not have been around when that was approved that can provide you a summary of what was approved out there. Everything from the layout of the site, the landscaping, the, the, there was a pretty distinct and unique sort of sign program that was done for that area. So, we'd be more than happy to send that to all of the planning commissioners, so you can all conceive that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 8.1, Bridgehead Road Properties. Mr. Gorman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We have one more item tonight. Let me get it ready and on your screens. All right. All right, and again, there's some nuance here, so you might see me rely on some notes. I appreciate your patience. So, tonight's work session is Bridgehead Road Properties preliminary general plan amendment. First, for where we are. We are in the opposite side of town from the last one. We're in the top-left corner there, the northwest along Bridgehead Road, near Highway 160. To get you a closer look, tonight, we have three properties making up the subject project site. And it is at the northwest corner of Wilbur Avenue and Bridgehead Road. Here's a vicinity map. Its current general plan land use designation is business park. Or these three properties are designated business park. You can see from the picture on the left, that's kind of a zoom out where you can see Oakley Road, Main Street, a large corner of Oakley, and we have a lot of commercially designated land over there. The red is general commercial. That's more services. You know, you could build a restaurant. You, you see, you saw, for instance, Chevron rebuild or remodel, things, projects like that. And then, in blue, you have light industrial. That's where you get the Oakley Logistics Center. You get smaller industrial condos. And then, if we really zoom in there, that's where you get the image on the right. The three parcels are there on the left. They're in a darker blue that's business park. And then, to the right there, that large wall of blue is the Oakley Logistics Center, you know, warehousing, and that's light industrial. That's to give you an idea of the surroundings. So, there's three properties we're looking at tonight. 6,001 Bridgehead Road is the one right on the corner. It, it is, it has two spaces for tenants. It was built before the city incorporated, and it covers roughly half an acre. The approximately 9,000-square-foot building covers most of the site, and it currently houses GM marble and granite operated by the property owner. The middle property, 6113 Bridgehead Road, remained vacant for several years before its recent occupancy by Luma Builders, a contractor currently facing enforcement action due to zoning conflicts that prohibit contractors' yards. A change in land use designation to light industrial would permit them to operate. The property consists primarily of parking and storage space with a 1,400-square-foot office building in the center of it. This is an image of the property before Luma Builders moved in. Now, the fencing is screened and Luma Builders uses that space as their office in the center. And then, they have their equipment and vehicles in the parking areas. Finally, the northernmost property is 6115 Bridgehead Road. There, we have an existing building with those roll-up doors. The trailer is not approved to be there, so we're tackling that as well. And the property owner has not occupied, they've recently purchased the site. They've not established a, a business on it yet. All three of these property owners are the applicant. So, they've come together to submit this application tonight. Tonight is a work session. And why a work session? So, a preliminary work session offers a chance for feedback and community involvement. Because this is a work session, city staff have not conducted a typical review of this proposal. So, what their desire is, their ultimate desire is one of the most intense land use applications you can do. It's very expensive and, and it's discretionary. So, you can do all that work of review and environmental review, and then, you get to your decision-making body, and they can say no. And so, we want, we want to make sure we have a predictable development environment. So, we have a preliminary general plan amendment process. That's where someone puts down a deposit of $2,000. Our job is to just get it in front of the decision-making bodies, get some feedback before they go into the intensive land use process. If feedback's good, then they can, you know, weigh jumping into that process. If feedback's bad, they can avoid investing all that money just to be denied. And so, because of that, $2,000 pretty much covers the process of getting something to a public hearing, noticing projects, writing the report. So, we haven't reviewed the, this extensively. The job is just to get it to you for feedback and let the public weigh in as well. The purpose of this work, oh, sorry, just said that. The planning commission's feedback is expected to be presented to the city council at a work session on December 9. So, we take it to both. And so, we'll take your feedback tonight, and we'll present it to them. All right, for the specific requests, this item is a request to discuss the merits of a potential project to amend the general plan land use designation of the subject properties from business park to light industrial. The three property owners have jointly filed for a preliminary general plan amendment, citing multiple justifications for their requests. They report strong market demand for light industrial space from small businesses seeking available rental units, which could provide support services to the nearby Oakley Logistics Center. Both owners and prospective tenants view the current list of allowable business park uses, including copying facilities and travel agencies, as outdated. The owners report minimal interest from businesses that align with the permitted business park categories. Finally, the property owners consider the original concept, a single developer acquiring all three of these parcels to build a unified business park, impractical given current conditions. We provide limited analysis here for this type of application. Amending the general plan designation to light industrial would make way for a rezone to Light Industrial District, which would then authorize uses permitted in the light industrial zone subject to zoning ordinance regulations. Uses currently permitted in business park zones would generally no longer be allowed. However, business park development would remain viable if a developer wanted to build a business park here. If our perspect, our three property owners went through with changing their land use designation to light industrial, they got approval from council. In the future, if there is a developer who wants to buy all three, you know, they could do that and just propose to council to make a business park, you know, go back to the old designation. So, that is a possibility. Under the current general plan designation, several light industrial businesses have been informed during the business license process that they cannot occupy this property. And so, you know, that's background that I know firsthand, so I work on business licenses, and we find that we've had to deny a lot of business licenses for these properties because they don't match a business park. Someone sees these buildings, which were built before the city incorporated, and they say, "Oh, that looks perfect for light industrial." They have light industrial occupancies, they have roll-up doors. And so, they go to move in, and we have to tell them there's a complicated land use history here where when the city was incorporated, the city envisioned a business park redevelopment. And so, they have to fit into a list of business park uses. And so, what we find is that we're denying a lot of light industrial uses right now. Approval of a future general plan amendment and rezoning application would enable such businesses to operate there. Given that the primary structure's existing building occupancy classifications accommodate industrial uses, it is unlikely that the light industrial businesses would require major tenant improvements or property redevelopment. Business park development would require full-site redevelopment. This is an advisory work session only, so there's no vote here. There is no process to approve a project because of this work session. The planning commission may act in an advisory role to the city council. Staff may include the planning commission's consensus, consensus direction from this meeting. Or sorry, we will include the planning commission's consensus direction from this meeting to the city council at a future work session. So, we're really looking for your feedback on whether it's appropriate to change this land use designation. And here is just a visual. So, again, existing and proposed, trying to match what's nearby. I can answer any questions you have. I have, it is tough to organize that many property owners. And so, I believe, oh, nice, I, okay, so, I have the property owners, and, and we, we can ask them if they want to speak. I don't recall, unfortunately, exactly what they said when we discussed it. But if it pleases the commission, we can ask. I appreciate it, commissioners, and, and I can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
I would like to ask if, with our experience with the existing light industrial, are there any potential environmental liabilities or any costs that might need to be borne by the city if there were, these changes were made?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So, one of the- Yeah, that's a really good question. So, one of the reasons the, one of the reasons the general plan process is expensive is they do need a California Environmental Quality Act analysis. And so that's really the major cost when they do this. And so, yes, we do have to do an analysis of how that change from Business Park to Light Industrial happens. And then, if it were to happen, you know, it is a regulated process for establishing Light Industrial. It doesn't inherently mean that there will be dangerous uses there or overly intense. And, let's say that we do change it, our code, the Light Industrial section of our code already has permitted uses that are not as intense. And then conditionally permitted uses are already in there. So if something is more intense, we have to bring it to you for a conditional use permit. And that has to be analyzed by itself, the specific use. Yeah, that's a really good question. Thank you.
So, for the owners that are here, I guess maybe my question is just more like, what is their vision that they're looking at? Like, what is like your vision as you all come together? I'm just curious to see what that looks like.
Excuse me, Chair.
Mr. Torres, would you, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say, if we're going to have anyone speak, back to the planning commission, we should ask them, even if they are an applicant, to fill out a public speaker card and come to the podium.
Do you mind just coming up and filling out a speaker card, either one of you?
You can do the speaker card after, it's fine.
Okay.
No, we can do it after, and you can speak now. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, so we just want to fit in like the rest of, like the rest of the people around us. I've been trying to rent out the small unit next, in part of my building, the smaller unit, and it's been probably 15 applicants that got denied. So it just shows you that it's very difficult to find someone to take on the space. A small business owner like myself needs to survive, especially during this time, just like the other two. So, yeah, we just want to fit in just like the rest of us.
And are you, are you thinking just more, when you say fit in, I guess I'm just trying to think of like, what, what does that look like, right, tangibly? I know you want to rent out space, but what are you looking to? I guess when I'm thinking Light Industrial, I'm thinking, how do we create the space that you have to make it accessible for also an economic development piece, right? Could we like recreate what we already have to, I'm just throwing it out there, okay, don't hold me to it. Like, for example, like a cool brewery, right, that's already, we already have the information, if we already have the structure there, can it be a potential business? Is that what you're looking at? Or is it more just like office space, storage unit? I guess I'm just trying to understand like what exactly you want that vision.
The list right now is, right now, a daycare to be on the list in a roll-up door like that? That doesn't make sense whatsoever. So I think the rezoning is to make it more fitting. I mean, accounting offices and roll-up doors like that, it just, it doesn't make sense. So, I'm not sure, I don't know a perfect way to like answer that. Just, right now, it doesn't, nothing works off that list.
Yeah, okay.
Realistically.
I'm just thinking. Thanks. And we can come back with proposed ideas, right? You said by December 9th to the City Council, or how would that work?
We're looking for feedback tonight on just the change in land use. And then we take that feedback, we write, we add it to our report to the City Council. And then we ask them the same question we're asking you on December 9th. We'll ask council for their feedback. So we are asking for feedback tonight.
So I have a question about Business Park use. So, question just is in regards to, do we have other Business Park zoning in the city? And is this change liable to create a situation where there's Business Park zoning? Where here, it may make sense to change, but in another area, it may not. Is this going to create a precedent or a problem for us in the future if we're changing the zoning here, affecting somewhere else in the city with Business Park zoning?
Yeah, let me, let me confirm my recollection. I don't know of any others, but I'll check with the boss here.
Business Park is not a very, a very, I guess, high-acreage type of land use in the city. I think there's a little bit to the, maybe to the east, that's currently part of another application for a rezone and a planned unit development. We have found that the Business Park is challenging with the types of uses, usually due to the location of that zoning and designation. So, in this case, the Light Industrial does open these sites up to much more development opportunity, more use allowances. And the benefit for the city with that is, in any sort of major development on these lots, let's say in the future, someone were to come in, want to buy all three and do a larger project. You know, what the city gets out of that are things like frontage improvements, maybe utility connections, things of that nature. So the property itself is brought up for the benefit of the property owner, and for those, and for the city as well, and the residents in the city. I would say that during my time here, I can't remember ever processing an application for a use in a Business Park zone. It does seem to be an unpopular zoning. And when I say zoning, I know we're here talking about the general plan, but ultimately, the zoning needs to comply with the general plan, and the zoning is what dictates the allowable and conditionally permitted uses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Recommendations?
I mean, I think I would support sending the City Council review, supporting this. I do think that we'd have staff to look into other Business Parks zoning in the area, and just see if it would be an issue and the issue of precedence. I think council might want to understand that before they make an actual decision.
And knowing that there are guardrails in place as far as any potential impacts, SEQA compliance, all of the, all of what goes with that, I recommend, I would recommend that we go ahead.
I'd give my support. I do have a question, though. Like, it doesn't sound like they want to do any changes to the property. Would that still require a SEQA?
Yeah, I think that's what's frustrating for the applicants. They, my understanding is that they feel that they're not able to use it as it currently exists. And so they're looking for the freedom to do that. State law requires that the change needs SEQA analysis because the possibility, the possibilities for the land would change. Yeah, it's a tough part of it for them.
I do would like to voice my support. We're not going to vote on this, as we're just providing feedback for the council. Is there any more comments that you'd like to send forward? Okay, so no vote is required. We move to the last item. Being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.